Good evening, welcome to our school board meeting for today's date, which is Monday, March 24th of 2025. We did begin a little bit earlier this evening in closed session, and so we're now ready to begin with, excuse me, with open session items. And we will be, go ahead and begin with a moment of silence if you'd like to join us. Thank you. At this time, we will stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. The first thing, first order of business are some recognitions and presentations. The first thing we're going to be doing this evening is an Inspire Award. The Inspire Award was created for our CPS stakeholders to recognize a teacher or staff member who has impacted their life, inspired their learning, or made a distinct impression on their child. Nominations are accepted from students, parents, student teachers, classroom volunteers, and community members. The RCPS Inspire Award is made possible with financial support from the Rockingham Education Foundation and DuPont Community Credit Unit, Union. And I believe tonight, we have Ms. Jenny Brown, a parent, presenting to Ms. Jana Grandall, who is a fifth grade teacher at John C. Myers. If you guys could come forward, please.
Is, okay, it's on. Thank you. Okay, I'm just gonna read the nomination. Jana is so much more than just a teacher. She instills kindness and compassion into the kids she teaches. My son has had a rough start this year emotionally, and she was in daily contact with calls, texts, or notes home. He felt supported and loved. He recently did excellent on a test, and she made sure during carpet time to tell, to call out his motivation and determination to not quit when things get hard. He was so touched. He talked about that with me for a while. We are so thankful for Jana. She teaches so much more than academics. We need more teachers that have her values, goals, and support.
Thank you. Next up on our list is a Fine Arts Appreciation Month presentation by Ms. Becky Ford.
Good evening, Dr. Schiflett and Chair Horst and school board members. Thank you so much for having us here tonight. We are so excited tonight, and it's our pleasure to speak on behalf of Fine Arts Appreciation Month, which is the month of March. So welcome, or I suppose we're on our way out, of celebrating this awesome month. This presentation is going to highlight the arts that Rockingham County offers both curricularly and extracurricularly, the research behind why fine arts are not a special, they are an essential part of our students' public education, as well as some highlights from some ensembles and individuals. Rockingham has embraced the five Cs as part of Virginia's state curriculum, and the fine arts courses offer a fertile ground for all five to flourish within our students. The arts foster creativity, collaboration, critical thinking, and communication skills within the classroom, and are constantly engaging with our schools' surrounding communities in order to develop students who are good citizens. Further, students in art courses demonstrate enhanced engagement within the school, increased academic achievement, and improved mental and behavioral wellness as researched across the United States. The fine arts is a huge umbrella term, and we understand that. So we want to make sure that we understand that in Rockingham County, we offer three primary disciplines of art forms, which are the visual arts, music, and theater. So this program tonight is going to dig into some of those subcategories there. The visual arts in Rockingham span from elementary through high school, and here you can see a list of our wonderful art educators on the left side of the slide. We have eleven elementary art teachers who combined to cover our fifteen school buildings, and ten art teachers at the middle school and high school level. Out in the lobby, you might see a selection of artwork that is chosen from our central office art show, and it represents all educational levels chosen from our central office art show, and as well some of our featured artwork for our winners of some state competitions. At the elementary level, teachers teach the basics of color, line, shape, texture, value, and pattern, but those are just the technique SOLs. In addition, there are strands that require our students to create artwork using a variety of media materials and techniques to identify spatial relationships, practice and expand their fine motor skills, and learn about the world around them. The four other strands specifically are the creative process, critical thinking, history and culture, and innovation in the arts. Art is so much more than just going and coloring, as some people might tell you. There's so much going on, and our teachers are encouraging all of our students to encourage all five strands in every class. On this particular slide, you can see one of our schools who did a project on Appalachian art, history, and culture. Through a grant through Refi and through Partners Excavating, they explored the different mediums and techniques, focused on weaving and stitching, pottery, and how that played a part in Virginia culture, and how that's going to continue in their lives. At the middle school level, art educators introduce some more advanced techniques within the same SOL strands, but allow students to do more individualized clay and kiln work, as you can see there. They created a pie box so that they could take it home and have that to keep. They explore shading and perspective within 2D work. Sixth graders have opportunities to do it in nine-week patterns, while seventh and eighth graders have the opportunity to do it on semester and year-long arts. Art electives are in severe demand, with some of our schools having more than a third of the population in an art class every single year. And so art educators are working overtime to make sure that all students have access. At the high school level, we have the full spectrum of instruction as well, but we're still digging into the advanced techniques. We go into crafts, digital artwork, advanced placement portfolio, AP courses, and we do some more competitive and community building. So on the left side of the screen there, you can see, this is one of three murals that Rockingham County Schools provided for the Bridgewater River Walk. And so they provided this artwork that's going to be up in our community for all Bridgewater residents, and anybody else who wants to go to the River Walk to see at all times. On the right side, you can see a flag winner, Sarah Hairston, we'll be honoring her in a little bit, and Chelsea had two pieces of work that were honored at the state level. This winning design is chosen out of hundreds of applications and just represented Virginia at the National Education Art Conference in Louisville, Kentucky, and will be on display for the next year. Moving into the theater strand, theater is found primarily in Rockingham at the middle school and high school level, but it's a mixture of curricular and extracurricular. You can see a list of wonderful teachers who are involved there on the left, but out of that list, we only have one full-time theater teacher. We have five who teach theater in addition to another curricular subject, whether it's an art subject or a different content entirely, and everybody else on that list is involved because it's a labor of love, that they think that theater is important, and so they get involved as sponsors and coaches to teach our kids theater. At the middle school, we do have theater electives, either a theater or a musical theater that kids can choose to take, but we also have one of our features that you guys have been partaking in over the last month, our middle school musicals, which are extracurricular. Featuring pre-recorded tracks, shortened songs, and age-appropriate dialogue, junior and youth musicals are the perfect way for students to learn how to work together as an ensemble, create stage magic, and promote their own self-confidence in being on stage. Theater opportunities at the high school level are expanded not only to do curricular theater and musical theater, but also technical theater in four different leveled versions of theater where students can get advanced coursework there. They learn the ins and outs of set design, lighting technology, makeup, costuming, stage management, and more. Students that are able to, in our schools that have the availability for it, also take students to state and national thespians conferences. And so there, you can see one of our groups that went to the state-level thespians conference and performed and did incredibly well competitively. As we move into music, this is probably our widest discipline, so music encompasses so much. We have music education from elementary through high school with instrumental, vocal, and general music threads. We have eleven elementary music teachers, and eight choral directors, and eight band teachers at our middle school and our high school levels. At the elementary level, teachers use a combination of orf and cadet techniques to make sure that students are playing, singing, and moving every single class. So every student has the opportunity to play mallet instruments, percussion instruments, orf instruments, ukuleles, and so much more. They're learning folk dances and learning about our culture, as well as they're learning about the music that's all around them in daily life and how they can interact with that. You can see on the left, that same school that had the Appalachian Project learned about Appalachian folk instruments and had people come in to play them for them, and they were able to experiment with that. On the right, you can see how students interact with our community. That's an elementary fifth-grade choir who went to EMRC to perform for the retirement community. In middle school, we split into choral music and instrumental music. Choral music gives students the opportunity to perform both together and individually. All of our Rockingham County choirs attended assessment this past week, which evaluated students on their diction, tone, timbre, stage presence, and intonation, and all of our schools earned either excellent or superior ratings onstage, which speaks to the level of education that our students are receiving. We also have individual competitors that are doing incredibly well. We're gonna talk about it here in a minute, the students who are competing on the state level for choir at both the middle school and high school levels each year. Within instrumental music, we typically think about band, but there's so much more. Students have the opportunity to learn guitar, piano, orf instruments. We have adapted classes for students with disabilities. We've got so many instrumental genres. And then we've got all of our extracurriculars. Here you can see a picture from our Rockingham County indoor combined percussion, which had students from all four high schools competing together as a Rockingham County group at the state level. They did incredibly well, going to multiple competitions and raising their final performance, eight points from the beginning of the season to the end of the season. So they did really well. On the right-hand side, you can see our marching bands, which are probably the most visible of our music opportunities. They're at parades, and they're at football games, and they do so much for our community, but they're also incredibly competitive, going to state-level competitions every year. Our bands also went to assessment, which again, just like choral assessment, rates them on how well they're teaching the SOLs in class, and all of our Rockingham County groups did incredibly well at assessment. We'd like to honor some special people, and so I brought my fine arts crew over here that we'd like to recognize them real fast. Some of them are able to be here tonight. We also have, we're competing with an Eagle Scout ceremony, which took out a large portion of some of our honorees, but we want to make sure we mention all of them by name. Making Middlestool State Honors Choir, this is a head-to-head competition where these kids sang into a tape recorder. They had to perform their individual competition and go against all the other middle school students in the state. We had Ashlyn, Kyle, Vivian Lunsford, and Shay McCombe make that. Can you guys stand, please? From Elkton Middle School, we had some Lions Club art contest winners, Jaden Chase, Emily Stauffer, and Aspen Gray. I don't believe they were able to be here, but I would like to make sure that they are recognized. Making All Virginia Jazz Band, in the fall, we had Derek Mickelson, who is at his Eagle Scout ceremony at the current moment. Again, he competed against the entire state to win one percussion spot out of the entire state, as the jazz percussionist playing the set, incredibly impressive. Making All Virginia Elementary Orf, so these are fifth graders who went and spent a weekend in the fall, practicing what their elementary music classes are teaching them, and they went and performed really, really well with students from all across the state collaboratively, Elijah Ford and Beckett Souter. We had one student make All Virginia Band this year. Again, this is a head-to-head against all the students across the state, and that is Caleb Eastup from Broadway High School. Making All Virginia Choir, this is one of our highlights. We have so many students making All Virginia Choir from Rockingham County every single year. If you could please stand and be recognized. Brett I., Natalie Flora, Lydia Good, Seb Harper, Ivy Herrick, Emily McAvoy, Reese Mills, and Avery T. Walt. And while you're standing up, I forgot to put it on the screen, but Making Senior Honors Choir, right, we had Brett I. and Emily McAvoy. We had Brett I. and Emily McAvoy. Making All Virginia Musical, so this was a new one for me, but we had a collaborative Across the State Musical. They competed with auditions in the spring of last year and made it, and this fall was the performance. We had two of our very own who were elected as the directors of that all-state musical, which was Justine Mackey and Ian Dively, and the students who made it from Rockingham, both onstage and with the set. Emily Burge, Cass Farrell, Jenna Kyle, Alex Lunsford, Emily McAvoy, Derek Mickelson, Reese Mills, Caitlin Morris, Liam Roderick, Ellie Schill, Elizabeth Seber, Alex Underwood, and Rowan Whitmire, and Kenneth White. A very special award, Youth Art Month, led by the VEAEA, but as I said, going to the NAEA convention. So we had students who submitted a flag design to represent Virginia, so each state got to have students compete, and one student was chosen from each school who would be the flag winner, but then there were also several runners-up. We have them here tonight, Sarah Hairston and Chelsea Cavazos. And their artwork is specifically up on the board, so as you're coming out tonight, I hope that you get to see it, because it's really wonderful flag designs. And then we've got one special thing that is yet to come. Our Turner Ashby High School Choir was asked to perform at a state school board meeting, so that is coming up in May. I'll send you all the details, but we are really excited that our Turner Ashby High School Choir, led by Ian Dively, is going to be going and getting state honors with performing there. All right, so here's my 30-second pitch. The arts are so important, and we all know it, and we see it, and we see what they do. We can have all the reasons behind it. Being part of the arts improves students' attendance, which we all know is so important. If they aren't there, they can't learn, and a lot of kids show up each day because they want to be in their arts classes. It encourages their mental and well-being as they think through their emotions, and they're able to process and perform and be part of a group that is collaborative and positive every single day. There have been so many numerous statistical studies to show that being part of the arts improves students' academic performance. There's a direct correlation, I won't say causation, but there is a correlation there, and we want to encourage our students to continue being part of the arts. And lastly, but definitely not least, it encourages students to graduate. Being part of the arts encourages students to stay as part of something, because it is not something that you take as a class and then you discard. It's something that students stay in every single year. So investing in the arts is investing in our students' success, and so we thank you for what you do for Rockingham County arts. Strong Fine Arts Programs encourages us to have well-rounded students all across, and so we're so proud of our students and we're so proud of our teachers for all that they do to do that. So thank you for your continued support of the Fine Arts Programs in Rockingham, because we need that, to continue that, so thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ford. And congratulations to all of our students in our Fine Arts Programs. Y'all are doing amazing things. Okay, next up on our agenda are public comments. We have one public, one person signed up for public comment tonight. Mr. Fitzgerald, if you would come forward.
I think you're probably familiar with our three-minute rule and...
Three-minute rule?
Three minutes.
That's gonna be hard, dude.
Well, we put a timer on you. You can't mess this up, see?
No, absolutely.
They'll give you a little alert.
I remember well.
Thirty seconds, you know.
I do remember well, I do remember well. Chair Horr, school board members, and Dr. Shiflett. Tonight, I come to you to talk about something that's very near and dear to my heart, and I say with very sincere thoughts, the comments I'm about to make about Massanutten Technical Center. I never thought I'd really come before the board again and speak, but I felt compelled to do so based on some press coverage that I've read and listened to, and just some folks I've talked to about the idea of Massnutten Technical Center governance changing. First and foremost, I think you gotta know that, you know, I've been in CTE, Career and Technical Education, or when I started vocational education, for 40 years. I still consider myself a part of vocational and career and technical education. In fact, tonight, I'm teaching ag teachers how to, I just finished up a little bit ago, how to work in the laboratory setting of our schools in Rockingham County and Augusta County have provided labs for that. So I feel like I'm in touch with CTE. I was a CTE student, and again, I have a lot of background in this. MTC has always been a diamond for Rockingham County. Every state meeting that I went to over my 40 years, over especially the last 20, have done nothing but shined light on Massnutten as being the number-one regional center, technical center in the state of Virginia. One of the reasons that that has happened is because when Massnutten Technical Center was first envisioned back in the 1970s, there was a system of shared governance. It wasn't about which school system controlled Massnutten, but rather what Massnutten Technical Center could do for the public and for the businesses that share Harrisonburg and Rockingham County. Not a single one of the businesses or industries that I ever met with during my tenure ever thought it would be good for one of the other systems to have, either one system, to have more of a say in a center like Massnutten than the other. Businesses honestly don't care. Businesses want access to students, not just our students in Rockingham, but they want access to all students. That's something we heard over and over and over from that business community. So what I want to challenge you guys to do, please, before you make your decision on this, please, please, talk with business and industry leaders, talk with the Massnutten Foundation Board, talk with the people on the CTE Advisory Committee. We have one that's a joint committee, and I've talked to many of those members, they didn't even know this was happening. So before you guys make a decision, please talk to the people who know what that means. It could result in reduced funding for Massnutten. It could result in initiatives not being offered to Massnutten because of that regional concept. The regional concept's a good one. It's been really successful since 1972, I believe it was. Please, before you change, just keep that in mind. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. The next thing on our agenda tonight is something called a Consent Agenda. It's new for us, but not new to the world of school boards and boards that govern things. And so I just want to share just a little bit about this. During our school board retreat with the SBMA, we discussed adding something called the Consent Agenda. It's just a list of action items that boards vote on that are expected, generally expected to pass unanimously without discussion or comment. It's just a way to make our meetings more efficient. If there's ever an item on here that any board member wants pulled off of the Consent Agenda, just because you'd like to have more discussion about it, or you think you might vote against this one item, all you have to do is ask, and we pull it off. This is not a way to circumvent school board members' rights and authorities in voting, it's just a way to make things more efficient. Tonight, I'll read what's on the Consent Agenda, although I will not do this in the future. Tonight's Consent Agenda contains minutes from March 7 and March 10, and so if you've been following any school board meeting of ours, you'll know, we pretty much just approve those 5-0, and we move on, so there's not usually any discussion with items like that. Same thing with personnel listing, which is on there tonight, bills and mileage for February of '24, field trip and field trips. So those are some things that we generally, when we're preparing for our meeting, we've already asked questions about them, or we just know when we come in here, there's not any changes or any discussions that we're going to need to have on these items. And it's just a way, we take one, one motion, which is like a blanket approval. So if there's anything on this Consent Agenda tonight, board members, that you want off, all you have to do is ask, and we can move it to an information or an action item. If, in this vote tonight, when there's a motion, hopefully we'll have a motion to approve the Consent Agenda as presented, and your yes, that one yes, applies to all of the items in the Consent Agenda. So rather than having to make a motion to approve the minutes, and then make a motion to approve the minutes, and then make a motion to approve the personnel, and then make a motion to approve bills and mileage, and one to make, you see how this is going to save us some time. And so, any... So we might, maybe I'll be heavy-handed and think that it just needs to go, you know, there might be an item in here that I think needs to go in Consent Agenda, and you all will say, no, we need to talk about this, and that's fine, we pull it off and we talk about it, we can make different motions with it. Maybe it's a, maybe there'll be policies that we've already talked about, and I'll pop them in there because I feel confident, you know, we can, they don't have to be a 5-0 vote, but in approving a Consent Agenda, that is how it would end up going. So for tonight, is there anything on this Consent Agenda that a board member would like pulled before we move on? Okay, so I will now ask if there is a motion to approve this Consent Agenda.
I move to approve the Consent Agenda as presented.
Thank you, Ms. Burgoyne. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Lor. Any questions, comments, or discussion, board members? Okay, all those in favor of approving the Consent Agenda, please say yes.
Yes.
All those opposed, say no. Motion passes 4-0. Okay, next on our list for tonight are some policy revisions that I believe Ms. Tenell... Oh, nope, Dr. Aldifer is making his way up here. It's all yours.
It's working, yeah.
Yep.
Yes, I'm pinch-hitting for Becky Tenell this evening. Dr. Shiflett, members of the board. I do have four policies here for your approval, for action this evening. They had come to you last meeting for information. They are adjustments in annual contract salaries of teachers when additional academic work is completed, policy on grading, promotion, and reporting student progress, parent involvement in Title I and LEP programs, and student wellness. So we are bringing these to you this evening for approval.
Chair Hurston, board members, I recommend approval of the proposed policy revisions as presented.
Thank you, Dr. Shiflett, board members. Do I hear a motion? Thank you, Mr. Cross is so moved to that.
I'm sorry. I'll second it.
Thank you, Ms. Lor, for the second. Board members, any discussion or questions?
I do have a question about Jay-ZP. There's a whole lot of stuff added about smart snacks in schools. Is that basically, is that something that's coming from our division, or is that something that's coming from legislature?
I don't know if Ms. Williams is here. Do you want to speak to it?
So nothing's really going to change. We already have healthy snacks in our vending machines that are available at certain times, and there are certain vending machines that are turned off during those times. Okay, so it's just wording. Okay, thank you. Great, thank you very much.
I just pulled that up and just wanted to bring to your attention. It says fundraiser instead of fundraisers. Or rating the funds. We got a problem?
Let's not do that.
Fundraising's good.
We'll make that edit. Thank you for bringing that to our attention.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor of approval of the proposed policy revisions, please say yes. Yes? All those opposed, say no. Motion passes 4-0. Thank you, Dr. Aldifer. We're now moving into information items. We have several things here tonight, beginning with Dr. Shiflett, who is going to give, give a budget recommendation to us.
Good evening, Chair Hurston, board members. I want to share my recommended budget for the '25-'26 school year, and I will thank you now, but also at the, at the end. I think we began these conversations in December, beginning early on, meeting with you guys individually to talk about priorities and what you wanted to see in the budget as we move forward, and it's been an ongoing process ever since then. Priorities from our comprehensive plan, so we approved our comprehensive plan, and we want to make sure that it is out in front of what we're doing, and everything that we do aligns with that plan. So in our comprehensive plan, we talk about the importance of school safety, we address academic excellence, employment, employee recruitment and retention, student behavioral health, and so we wanted to make sure that we acknowledge those aspects of the comprehensive plan within our budget. And as always, we want to make sure we're being collaborative with our Rockingham County staff, working with Mr. Armstrong and Ms. Davidson and the board supervisors through this entire process. Expected revenue, around $786,000, of an increase of about $46,000, and this is primarily from Medicaid reimbursements. State revenue, $89,839,44, an increase of, what, $7.1 million? This is, as you are probably aware, we currently do not have a budget from the state. I think August, April 3, I think is, I think the deadline where they're going to be meeting again. But we use the General Assembly's budget, it was a little more favorable to us, and this does include a 3% raise for all of our employees and some additional funding for some other staff that you'll see as we get into the presentation. And expected revenue will be a bit of a decrease from the federal side, about $132,000, and then an increase of about $5.5 million from the local share of education with our, again, asking of the board of supervisors. So our total budget will increase to $189,244,497, an increase of 12.6, which is about 7%. I know the $12 million sounds like a big number, but when you look at a budget as large as ours, it's not quite as significant an increase. So one of the things maybe you're asking, well, why the increase and what's, what's happening? One, significant increase for us has to do with some of our special student populations, and our ELL enrollment numbers have increased significantly, 123% increase in the last four years. So if you go back and look at our previous budgets, there's been additional funding for EL teachers and assistants to support, to support their learning. And another variant this year is the Department of Education changed the formula for support for EL students. At one point, it was 50 to 1, and then, you know, 50 students per one teacher, then it was changed to 40 to 1, and now it's based on the actual level of the student. So a Level 1 student, I think, is 20 to 1, Level 2 student, 30 to 1, and then Level 3 and 4 students, 40 to 1. So you'll see later in the slide, to make our school division compliant with those new formulas, we're going to be hiring 13 EL teachers, which is the most we've ever hired in any given year. Another area where we've seen significant increase is in special education. In last board meeting, or board meeting prior, Mr. Bryant gave us a presentation about their needs in the Special Education Department, and, you know, again, a 20% increase in four years of our special education population, and I think something that, you know, we need to acknowledge is that students with autism, 51% increase of that particular group of students that we're serving. Many cases, these are self-contained classrooms with a teacher and a number of assistants trying to work with them. Not always the case, but in some areas. So I want to walk through a little bit of our expenditures, highlighted expenditures, and kind of talk about what we're asking with this increase in revenue. School safety, so we requested two additional school resource officers, which, next year, we'd put four for the sheriff's office to hire. We have two in there now that have not yet been hired. So we had four this year, two were hired, two were not, and so in conversations with the sheriff, he felt like that four could be a reasonable number for this, for this year. Again, depending on the job market and who he can hire. Again, depending on the job market and, and who he can hire, but we are requesting two more. So that would give us four next year to hire. And then also some other school safety initiatives. I'm not going to publicly get into the details of all of those, but I think they would add some layers of safety to our schools. And we want to be mindful, again, that was one of our high priorities for, for our comprehensive plan. When we talk about employee recruitment and retention, 3% increase in all salary scales, which is approximately $3.3 million. Don't want to bear down too much in the weeds here, but I think the board has a really solid understanding that when the state says they're giving us a 3% raise, they are never providing enough money for us to give a 3% raise to all employees, maybe half or 60%. So that means the local, the localities have to make up the difference. We also, this year in the budget, have a supplemental pay for our special education personnel. So teachers who are working in the adapted sped programs would receive a supplement of $4,500 per teacher. And also the paraprofessionals working in those same classrooms would have an index on their salary of 1.12, which is like a 12% increase. And our speech and language pathologists would be an additional increase of $2,000. That is an area where we're finding it very difficult to attract and retain teachers because that, because there's such a demand for them in private industry. And then bus drivers adding or increasing the hourly rate. I think currently it's $15 an hour. We would take it to 13, it's currently $15 an hour, we'll take it to 18. Some other division proposals. We currently have two strong starts programs in Rockingham County. These serve students on pre-K, K and 1. Our plan would be to add another program and extend that resource to second grade. And then add a new program, a pilot program in grades 3 to 5. And so this is again, a program for students who maybe have not yet been identified as having special needs. And we're trying to help them get acclimated to school, get their behaviors regulated so that they can participate in school fully without being a disruption to the learning environment. So, well played. So. Also a pilot for elementary math teachers. This is something that the school board and I have talked quite a bit about, trying to find teachers who have a passion and are really a strong gift for teaching elementary students math to improve their achievement. And at the same time, allowing some additional planning time for our teachers at the elementary level, which they're lacking. And we've talked about it and really tried to even look about doing a pilot this year, but it didn't come to fruition. So we want to put, dedicate some dollars to doing a pilot this coming school year, begin advertising these positions once the budget's finalized. Work out the kinks and then hopefully kind of continue our work to move this forward in the, in the future over the coming years. Middle school full-time substitutes. This has been a request the last number of years from our middle school principals. And we're trying to, again, help them in an area where they're having some shortages. We're also going to be moving some of our fine arts teachers to extended contracts. Currently, I think they're on a 10-month contract. And then they, they get paid on a timesheet through the summer for some of the band camps and some of those things that they're doing. So that's not a tremendous expense, but it is, would be a slight increase. We need two sped vans. And again, we talked about the two SROs and we have the two from last year and then 504 coordinator stipends. Some additional personnel that we're just, again, I mentioned earlier, 13 EL teachers, two sped instructional coaches. Part of that came from Mr. Bryant's presentation about trying to, the roadmap for the special ed department. One sped teacher for the post-grad class and that would also require two assistants, two additional sped teachers to help in our schools to make us, you know, in compliance with ratios. Student to teacher ratios, two sped assistants, three and a half reading teachers, nine elementary teachers. And so trying, we, you know, we continually through the spring, we look at our elementary enrollment numbers and class size ratios and try to keep them in balance. And so those nine teachers would help make sure that we're, we're in a good, good place to begin the school year. Four elementary assistants, one secondary elementary teacher, I believe at the high school for math or science. I cannot remember which off the top of my head. Doug, do you remember which school was, okay. And then back in the fall, we talked about the idea of adding medical science as an option for our students. We felt that like that was one place in the CTE world where we weren't really offering our students what, what they would need. And so we, you guys approved that. We put it in the course program of studies and we've had enough students sign up for that to warrant hiring two teachers. That would be a part-time at each of the four high schools. Cybersecurity manager, as we think a little bit in the future about potentially getting some, securing better cameras. Someone's going to need to keep, help keep an eye on that along with some other things. An FCS teacher, a BSA, some administrative interns, three EL assistants, a clerical position. And then extending a couple of social worker contracts and some early special education teacher contracts. So that's sort of what all we're asking for and some. So our increase in local funds from our board of supervisors would be 5 million and then some one-time requests for some one-time expenditures. So local revenue would be 84 million, 84.3 million dollars. Capital. And capital projects fund, just at the bottom. We have $9 million going towards renovations at Elkton Elementary School, $15 million towards MTC. And we're not exactly sure today if that's going to be renovation or new build, but we're setting aside, we'll have to get money for that. And then McGaughy'sville renovation and addition and. The Pleasant Valley addition of 6, 6 million. So $34 million, a little over $34 million in capital improvement. So and then food services, basically money in, money out, break even. That's the goal. We had to use a little bit of money this past year in reserves. So moving forward, based on this budget, you know, $7 million coming in, $7 million going out. So I need to call your attention to this piece and I know we've talked about it and I will do my best to hopefully explain so folks understand. Currently in this school year, we have 14 schools participating in the federal community eligibility provision. And so for those 14 schools, all students in that, who attend those schools, all of them get free lunch. We have nine schools who are participating in the free and reduced meal application program. And in those schools, if your family is in need financially, you may qualify for a free meal, no cost to you or your family. And in some cases, maybe you don't qualify for a free meal, you would, you would qualify for a reduced meal. So you wouldn't have to pay as much. But families who can afford to pay for their child's lunch would pay for their child's lunch. So moving into next year, 25, 26, all of our schools will be participating in the free and reduced meals application program, all 23 schools. We're moving away from the community eligibility provision. If we continued on this path, like we currently are in 24, 25, we would have to come up with another $600,000 in the budget to offset the loss. Okay, and in conversations with board members and our colleagues there at the board of supervisors, they fully support us offering free meals to families who need them. Reduced meals to families who need them, but for families who can pay, we would expect them to pay for their child's lunch. So hopefully that is understandable by folks, you know, again, I'll repeat, families who have a financial need, their students would still qualify for free lunch. We continue to feed students each and every day. We have no intentions of moving away from that. But the CEP program just doesn't work out financially for us. It's not, you really, to really make a difference, I think you have to be at like a 60% threshold or some really high exorbitant number to, to make it make sense. So that is going to be a change. And I think for some of those families in the 14 schools, it could be a little bit of a, a heartburn, but I think it's, it's the right, it's the right move forward for us, makes sense financially. So next steps, so Tuesday, tomorrow, wow, we're going to be meeting at the central office, John Kidd School Board offices at 3:30 to approve the budget. And I'll make a recommendation and seek your approval. And then on Wednesday, March 26th, that evening, I'll be presenting this to the board of supervisors. And, you know, making our, sort of stating our case for why do we need these additional dollars in revenue? And I understand, you know, we all, you know, have needs and trying to do the best that we can. And, and we've looked really carefully at our budget this year. We went to our division leadership teams and said, hey, go back in, comb through your budget again, see if you can find some extra dollars. Let's, let's make sure that we, you know, tighten our belts. And we had to give up, again, some things that maybe we wanted to do, but we can talk about that later. I, again, want to say that, again, thank, thanks to, you know, you folks, school board members, and our counterparts, again, at the board of supervisors. I want to thank Justin. He's been on this since, I think, December. He's been crunching numbers, which he enjoys doing. And Xena, his supervisor of finance, and Brenda and Caitlin helping me put this presentation together. One comment I would make that I think, you know, you always, when Justin and I both, we were kind of new in our roles last, last year, we did this the first time and you, you kind of lived through it. And you get into it the second time, you say, well, what can we do better? And as we think about, you know, an operating expense like adding additional elementary math teachers, right? It's kind of a long-term commitment that we, you know, need support from our local board of supervisors. Maybe, you know, we're thinking through, what would, what would it look like to have a sort of a tentative three-year plan as we look at some of these division projects that we want to do and explore with pilots that help inform our decisions moving forward. I think that would help us. I think the board of supervisors and our liaison meeting expressed something similar about getting information a little bit sooner and, and thinking through the process. So, you know, we have a five-year plan for our capital projects and that's a little bit more concrete and sometimes you don't know what's coming and going. But I think we want to be mindful of, you know, maybe what's around the corner, right? So this year there were zero increases in health insurance, but I understand there may be some next year, right? So we need to be thinking ahead to what that looks like and what else we, you know, we may be incurring at some point, you know? I don't know what, when, six, seven years from now, we may open a new elementary school. So what does that look like for, you know, operational money? So I think it would behoove us in the future, maybe to have conversations with our liaison committee about looking, you know, sort of over a, maybe a three or four-year span of what we foresee in our budget, not knowing everything. And it will be, it would have to be flexible, but I think it would maybe help us in, in moving forward. So they know what our ask would be and, and they would know how they could support us and help work through that situation. But they've been very helpful to us this year. So there's the budget. What questions do you have about this?
Board members, take it away. If you've got questions for Dr. Shiflett.
My, my only question is, and I, I think you fixed it in your presentation there, was for the SROs. So it looks like we're still asking for four. So there was two left from last year. We asked for four last year. We only got two. This year, we had two from last year's budget. We're going to carry that over. We're going to ask for two more, which will be a total of four again this year. Is that correct?
That is correct. And my conversations with the sheriff, he and I chatted about this a couple of weeks ago. And, and, and he felt like, you know, it was a little bit of with some of, with the job market, he wasn't able to, to get the four this year. And, but thinking that, looking for better days ahead, that we could get four next year. So the two plus two more, which would be, you know, a, a great benefit. We've continued to, to add SROs and appreciate the work that they do for us and the way they serve our students and our, and our staff and our community. So yeah, that would be the, the plan, Mr. Cross, to have four added next year.
The second thing I wanted to say, I wanted to say, thank you so much to Chair Hurst and Vice Chair Burgoyne for all the work you two specifically put into this year's budget. And I know you guys put a lot of time and effort into it. I know you guys get a lot of money paid from the county to go do that. So I appreciate all the time that you put into it, all the meetings that you were in between the board of supervisors and with Dr. Shiflett, our executive team. Everything that you guys have done this year for this year's budget has not been lacking on our behalf on the board. And these two individuals have done a great job advocating this year for Rockham County Public Schools. And everything that you see in this year's budget isn't even close to what the school board really wanted. And so I just want to say thank you too. I want to recognize both of you tonight for the work that you put into this year's budget. Because I'm looking on the outside, people don't see it. Looking on the inside, I saw how much work you guys put into it. And as a board member, I want to say thank you publicly for doing that. So thank you guys both.
I'd also like to thank Dr. Shiflett and his team, Justin, for meeting with us a number of times, many more times than we've met with in the past, and I really appreciate it. So many times, so many times we met individually and you were just available to answer any questions we had. And I have a much better understanding of this than I have in the past and I appreciate that. I do want you to clarify some things for us, if you would, Dr. Shiflett. You, we're talking about school lunch, but it's actually school meals, is it not? It, breakfast too?
That's true, breakfast as well, yes.
So if, if, and I, I am fortunate enough to be able to pay for my children's meals. So in the future, I would be doing that. And then also I want you to explain a little bit how the process works, say, because I definitely am one of those parents that forget to send the check in and the balance gets down to zero and I don't get the message. What will you do with children like that in the future?
So we provide meals. Thanks for the clarification. Breakfast and lunch regardless of how much a student owes on debt. We don't, you know, refuse food, nor do we publicly shame students and make them go last or, you know, do other things, right? Then we just come in, punch in their number, get their meal, have a seat. But we will call parents and ask them for those funds, right? When parents register, we will provide them with the application for free and reduced meals. You know, I recall back my days, and Ms. Williams, if you need to help me out here, but my days as a principal, if a student began to incur some debt, right? We would, you know, or, you know, they start mounting up, then we may reach out to the family and ask, do they need free meals or reduced meals, right? And so trying to, you know, help them help themselves, right? And so it, it will, I mean, be a, for those 14 schools who have not collected money for meals the last few years, well, it's going to be a little bit of a strain now for them to work on maybe collecting dollars and doing some of those things. But I, I think when it boils down to it, it's about making sure the kids who need the meals are provided the meals and the families who, who can pay are paying. And I think that makes sense.
And that the children will never be made, felt poorly because of mistakes that maybe their parent has made.
Correct.
Just wanted to make sure that that was out there loud and clear.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Shiflett. Again, thank you for all of your hard work. I'm definitely ready for March to be over. So thanks for everything you did to put all this together. Thanks to your team. Looking forward for, looking forward to the meeting on Wednesday night.
It's a new kind of March madness, is it not?
It is indeed. Next up for information items, we have. Next up for information items, we have Ms. Donna Abernathy. No, we do not. We have Ms. Kim Tate coming up to discuss our VOWS mid-year student achievement data.
Gotcha. Chair Hurst, members of the board, Dr. Shiflett. I want to share with you as requested, just some mid-year information regarding VOWS, which this year we give in K3. Last year, we were part of a pilot for VOWS. Previous to VOWS, our screener for K3 was PALS. But this is a result of the Virginia Literacy Act and that movement towards what is VOWS. In Rockingham, we had the advantage of piloting this last year. So this would be the second year that our K3 teachers have administered this particular screener. I'm going to go over some quick vocabulary and just a summary of what the screener might look like for a student and family, and then give you the specific data. VOWS is a bit more explicit than the previous screener, PALS. One of the things that VOWS looks at is, first of all, that smallest unit of sound, the phoneme. So for example, if I said with you out being able to read cloud and clown, the difference is one phoneme. So it's that ending sound in, that we are looking at. And students need to be able to substitute, manipulate phonemes. VOWS also looks at decoding. When we think about students being able to take what they know and move from print to speech and speech to print. So I now know my letters, I know my sounds, and now I'm going to put that all together, decode text. And we work predominantly in K1 with decodable text. Text that addresses the letters and sounds that students have been taught explicitly. Because that's the way we know the science of reading tells us we learn to read. When we get to encoding, it gets a little bit more complicated. I would say that encoding is probably much more difficult because now we're getting to spelling. If we think about the word cloud and clown again, the ow sound in cloud and clown is spelled two different ways. And it gets a lot more complicated for students. So our teachers explicitly teach encoding and spend a great deal of time helping students get from that speech to actually using those graphemes to write and to spell words. Fluency, this is an area that VOWS screens for. It is the rate and expression that students use when they read. And I think the important thing to understand, I can decode the sentence. Every rhizome contains over-signifying lines of segmentarity according to which it is stratified, territorialized, organized, and signified. But if I am not a fluent reader attending to the punctuation, putting phrases together, I can't comprehend it. And so particularly when we get to the end of second grade, third, fourth, and fifth grade, for students who may have difficulties, we're working a lot in that rate and expression area in their flexible groups. And VOWS does the screening for that for us. Syntax is what I explain simply as Yoda speak. I can say, happy am I, or I can say, I am happy, which is the traditional syntax that we use. The complicated thing, as a former AP teacher, is when the sentences get really complex. It's important, and I probably did not do as good of a job as I should have, to make sure that students understand the complexity of the syntax, how the phrases are put together, to be able to break that down to then comprehend. Also screened in VOWS is the RAN, that's that rapid naming, the automaticity. This was not previously screened in PALS. And we talk about this when we talk about processing. It is being able to automatically see a word, know what it is, know what it means, to be able to process it as a word and to be able then to internalize its meaning. So this is the vocabulary that students are screened with, all the areas that will on a student summary of a VOWS screener. And with our, I'm going to look at this closer up than up there. With our VOWS screener, what we are determining is the risk band that a student might find himself or herself in according to the screener. We, when all of the screening is complete, have students who are identified not at a particular benchmark, but as a band of risk for their potential for having reading difficulties. And if a student has an asterisk, in this case, it's by phoneme segmenting, it lets both the teacher and potentially a specialist know this is an area where a student specifically needs work. So we, each student gets a student summary. And the parents also get a summary of a student's screening information. So we have high-risk students, moderate risk, and low-risk students. Our students who are high-risk are required to have intervention by law. This has been in place since 2000, the early intervention reading initiative. And so those students should get two and a half hours a week of intervention by a reading specialist in addition to their work with a teacher in the classroom in core instruction and in flexible group. Our VOWS data last year, and again, we have this because we gave the screener as part of the state pilot of VOWS. Other divisions would not have this information at this point. We only have fall and spring because they did not give us mid-year information because again, we were part of the pilot. So you can see by grade level, 30% of our kindergartners in the fall of 2023 came to us at high risk. You know, you look at some of that data in the fall of last year. And if you look at that spring data, 30% to 23% by the spring, 30% to 28%. They're moving in the right direction. And that was pre having a curriculum for them to use. They were certainly doing amazing things. If you look at that second grade work, and we need to applaud our teachers in all of this data because that's who's doing the heavy lifting, to be able to take a student who, you know, almost half of our second graders last fall, in the fall of 2023, were high-risk. And they got them to 28%. So we're moving in the right direction. If we look at this year's data, even more of our kindergarten students came to us as high-risk. A teacher hasn't done any instruction, that's how they are sent to us.
Can you explain how a kindergarten is sent as high-risk, like what?
In other words, those students come to us not ready to learn and to read. What we would think of, in other words, whatever is happening prior to their entry to school, they're not possibly being given the exposure to letters, to books. They may not be being read to. They may have, many of our students come to us. Dr. Shiflett talked about speech language pathologist and the need for more of them with severe speech issues. And if you can't hear the sound and then say the sound, it's almost impossible to learn to read.
Okay, so you're basing your metrics off of kids at kindergarten, what we're talking about, five-year-olds?
Correct.
High-risk because they haven't been read to or when they enter in?
Yeah, we don't know what's happened to them. No teacher has done this. That is where they are when they come to us.
Yeah, the, the risk is, is based on how they perform on that initial beginning of the year assessment in VOWS. And there can be a lot of reasons, right? Like you can have, hmm, yeah, they're using an assessment to determine who falls in these, in these bands. Yeah.
But if you look at our mid-year data this year, 34% and now at mid-year in January, kindergarten teachers had students at 22%. And if we go back, can I go back? Maybe, yes. The 22% is already lower than the end of the year data last year.
Are we using, we're doing VOWS in pre-K as well, but it's just not in this, right?
Correct.
So I just went through this with my twins, and I will show you. It was very confusing when I originally went through it for me because I'd never seen it before. But now that we've done it twice, it makes sense and seeing the comparison is interesting, so.
Kindergarten and first grade in particular, I think there are a couple of reasons. And again, I think you need three to five-year data to truly know everything that's happening. But I will say that it is the work of our teachers. It is an explicit sequential curriculum that they are being provided that are moving students in the direction we want them. Our Division Literacy Plan, as required by the Virginia Literacy Act, indicates that we will have 5% reduction annually of students who are at high risk. Now, with this, we'll make even great, we've made even greater gains. But those are certainly our goals in trying to be reasonable for what teachers can do. I would say too, at second and third grade, the rigor of the curriculum, with students not having had that rigor in kindergarten and first grade, we will see differences, I think, moving forward because of what we've learned and also the hard work of our teachers. So if I look at takeaways from a literacy team perspective, over a third of our students are coming to us in that high-risk band. And so that is a lift for our teachers and our specialists. This data is not disaggregated and VOWS does not do that. So we don't know where gap groups might fall. It, it is just screening for the grade level. So we just wanted to be transparent in that. Improvement is certainly evident. And I want to give credit where credit is due. It is the explicit instruction and collaboration of classroom teachers, reading specialists, special educators, and EL teachers who are helping to write student reading plans and really digging down to try to help students be able to grow at the greatest potential at which they can grow. Additionally, the high-quality instructional material that is required by the Virginia Literacy Act, part of our Division Literacy Plan, does take the pressure off teachers about what to teach. It is designed to let them know that they are covering all the components of literacy in the course of a lesson. Student reading plans, we are progress monitoring students every two weeks to determine if those students who are high-risk are moving in the right direction. We're not waiting until VOWS in January to see if what we're doing is working. And since January, we are continuing to progress monitor those students every two weeks to make sure that they are continuing to make growth and progress individually. We're on the way. You know, I really think there's great credit to the educators in Rockingham County. I can't think of anybody I'd much rather be collaborating with. I've linked in the presentation, the Division Literacy Plan. I know you've seen it, but I linked it there as well as the EIRI information and what our goal is in that plan. We are required by law to update and revise the Division Literacy Plan for the biennium by June 30th of this year.
Thank you, Ms., thank you, Ms. Tate. Board members, do you have any questions?
Question. And maybe you said it and I missed it, and I apologize. The, the point, this data is not disaggregated for gap groups. Are we giving this testing to every single kindergartner?
Yes.
And we're required to meet these benchmarks?
The only exceptions would be if they had a pre-K IEP. Some students can, and we actually were meeting with our sped supervisors today. We've been meeting with them pretty regularly to try to align the IEPs that students have in special education so that our student reading plans are helping students who have an IEP meet their IEP goal. So there are in VOWS exemptions, accommodations, and so forth for students, particularly adaptive students, students who might not be able, or they may have some sort of communication issue. Some students are nonverbal. It has to be in their IEP as to what we can do in their accommodation to VOWS. And so Sarah and Carrie have been working with us tirelessly. As a matter of fact, we've already got a day in June that we're going to be working all day and making some presentations in the fall to help our elementary schools, well, really K8 because VOWS goes K8 in the fall. So we want to try to help everybody be on the same page as best we can. It's, it's complicated.
Thank you.
Dr. Shiflett, would you give, could you come back to, to the board at some point in the near future and give us a Division Report Card on Proficiency in Reading in fourth grade? And also by the time they graduate?
Sir, just based on the SOL assessments?
Whatever you feel like is the best to, to give that number out. I would like to know that number.
Sure, be happy to do that. And one thing while I'm on the mic, Mrs. Tate, I want to, if, if I recall, the mid-year assessment is not a repeat of the fall assessment. So it is basically a benchmark as to where they should be in January or February. Is that correct?
Correct. And again, I, I clarify that it is not considered, VDOE would not consider it a benchmark, but the band of risk does move. And Mr. Cross too, to help, I was in VDOE meetings all last week. I will say that the VDOE has moved to align the 2024 standards with NAEP, which does that national reading assessment. And so that has been something with the new standards that VDOE had them privately evaluated to determine if they align with the NAEP standards as well, which are national.
Ms. Tate, I have a couple of questions if, oh, no, go ahead, Mr. Cross, you finish. I didn't realize you still had some. Um, my, my, I just want to clarify or double-check that these numbers that you're providing are just the high-risk numbers, percentages, is that correct?
Correct.
In that, in that, because there's high, moderate, and low. So we're just looking at the data for?
For those students that we're serving for, with interventions.
Right, okay. What other assessments are we using to track our student progress, especially in, because this just, I know you say VOWS is coming, but what are we using especially for? I know you say vowels is coming, but what are we using especially for grades four through eight right now?
Well, in four and five, we're using M-Class, which is a part of our high-quality instructional material. Actually, we have data points on M-Class for K-three as well. And six- I'm sorry.
Or how do those align with Virginia S.O.L.s?
It, they, it aligns more with vowels
Okay.
than I would say Virginia S.O.L.s.
Okay.
Because again, we know that sometimes students don't do well on an S.O.L. test and it may not have anything to do with their ability to read. There may be other factors in play, so it's good to have those multiple data points, not only their S.O.L. test, but some students, especially when you get to students in possibly upper grades and middle school, I don't know, can become, I don't care for a variety of reasons that, again, I think in six and seven, we have used this year, Akadients, which is very similar to vowels. The reason we moved, we already had seats in Akadients because we'd been using it in grades four and five previously. Since we had the new curriculum, we moved our Acadian seats to grades six and seven because it helped us look at students who needed intervention, but also students that we kind of wanted to be watching for whatever reason also, so that classroom teachers would know the maze score, that piece for comprehension. We wanted to make sure that classroom teachers were aware of that. Six, seven, and well, actually, yeah, six, seven and eight, thus far, the state board voted in February to approve, approved interventions and supplements. So they have not voted, they're out for public review. They have not voted yet to approve those, and so until they do, we have not purchased anything that might do that. The other concern, of course, we have is we do not know who we're going to be required to give vowels to in four through eight. Because we don't know if it's going to be a financial issue or not on behalf of VDOE.
Sure.
A screener should be given to every student. The literacy team and I have a plan in place to be able to do that. And if we are allowed to, that would be our preference. VDOE could tell us the money's not there. You only can service students who fall into these categories, in which case we'll abide by
Yeah.
their law.
Another question I have, kind of switching gears here. As a former reading specialist, I know the importance of literacy coaching, but I also fully believe that our reading specialist's time should be with students because they're, the specialist's trained to help with those targeted, at-risk skills that we need. So I'm sure we don't have this data yet, but I would like to have an ask that we find out how much time our reading specialists at the elementary level are spending working directly with students versus what percentage of time they are spending working in a coaching model, whether that's in bridge to practice or some other form. And of course, you know, I realize in every school, it could be, there's one, one reading specialist who all of her day is spent, all of their day is spent with students, and then maybe the other reading specialist is doing kind of a part model where they're doing some student work and then some coaching, but I, so I would like that information broken out, not just, I don't want an average for the school, I just want to know each reading specialist, how much time is being devoted by school?
By specialist or by-
By specialist, by school.
Okay.
Yeah.
So Dr. Shiflett, would you refine my search to the S.O.L. standards?
Board members, do you have any other questions?
Thank you, Ms. Tate, for coming.
Yeah, I appreciate your time and we're, I'm hoping to bring more data because, you know, more data about student achievement because that's what we're all about, so thank you for your time. Next up, Ms. Liza Kaufman, coming to us with some information on grant funding for something called Let Grow.
Good evening, Chair Hurst, board members and Dr. Shiflett. I'm glad to be here this evening to talk a little bit about an exciting grant that we were awarded through the Office of Parental Engagement by the Department of Education. So in the late spring and then through the summer, a lot of people were reading The Anxious Generation. And then the First Lady Yonkin hosted the fireside chat with the author, Jonathan Haidt, I think I said his name correctly. And through exposure through that book and through conversations and the fireside chat, a lot of our staff became aware of a program called Let Grow, which is a, as profiled in Anxious Generation, it is a national sort of organization or program that provides materials free of charge to schools or other organizations that want to increase their communication with parents about the importance of, with their child, developing independence. So it's not that like we're going to, I was telling my dad about this the other day and he was like, well, you know, in sometime in the sixties, he's like, my friend Whit and I, we got on the bus and we went to the expo in Montreal. I was like, Dad, we're not talking about that. But we are talking about things like whatever is the next right step for parents with their children to develop independence, because there's tons of research that shows how important independence is in building self-confidence and resilience in students. And it might be something little, like this week I want to learn to pour the milk on my cereal all by myself. Or this week I want to walk to the park with my friend. Or whatever it is that the parents and the children decide that is the next right step for them, Let Grow helps us communicate more effectively with parents to encourage that kind of self-confidence building independence. So some of our rock star administrators and counselors have started pilots in the schools this year, specifically at Riverbend and Mountain View, and they are working with small-scale projects to help to start implementing Let Grow. And sort of around the same time, we became aware of a grant opportunity, a micro-grant opportunity through the Department of Parental Engagement at VDOE. And we applied for that to be able to purchase some materials and contract for some services to be able to reach more parents and promote more independence for students. And we received word in December that our grant was funded. And then we kind of didn't hear much from Richmond until maybe two, maybe three weeks ago, when they told us that our grant funding, we were still going to be funded, but they were going to draw our money from a different pot. So originally, we were going to be able to draw the funds from the Department of Behavioral Health through the Office of Parental Engagement. And now it turns out it's going to be Title I Part A money. And so for Title I Part A, you know, different pots of money, different rules. And the rules for Title I Part A are that it needs school board approval. So that's why I'm here to present to you and answer any questions. I'm just this evening for information and then next meeting, I'll be back for approval. And I'll be glad to answer any questions either this evening or anytime in, in the two weeks. The main terms of the grant, right, it's $10,600 that we are grateful to have and we basically want to spend it for three main things. We want to purchase some translated copies. We have materials in English and in Spanish, but we'd like to make sure that we're reaching more parents. And some of our parents speak languages other than English or Spanish. And so for four different languages, which are, I hear the major languages for our families to be able to reach the most folks, those are some of the things we like to buy with the grant. Also, some of the projects that students might consider and families might, the, the right project for the kid might not cost anything, right? Pouring the milk on your cereal, not, not a funding impact. But we'd also like to create at the two elementary schools, a lending library of sorts. Because some of the things, like if you want to learn how to jump rope, but you don't have a jump rope, or you want to go to the park, but you need a ball, or just like basic supplies. A lot of students, when schools roll this out, a lot of things that they find is that students want to be able to cook for their families. We're not going to stock like steak and caviar, but a like pancake mix that's just add water and some syrup and then you have breakfast for dinner. And the student has developed that self-confidence being able to fix dinner for their family. So a few simple materials in a lending library. And then lastly, we would like to be able to use the money to capture some Rockingham-specific stories. So the national organization Let Grow has really great promotional materials, I think, that capture stories from parents and from kids who have participated. But being able to access these grant funds would let us capture some Rockingham-specific stories, especially at these two pilot sites, which then we're hoping would be able to catch on to other elementary schools or maybe even secondary schools throughout the division to have more of our families and more of our students aware of the positive self-confidence building that is there in independence. So I would be glad to answer any of your questions.
I have something to add here. So after we went to the watch party at Mountain View and watched that, it really, like, I felt terrible as a parent that I had been mom, I guess is the term. And about a week later, there was a pizza night at my kid's school and so it was at the Domino's in Broadway. And it just dawned on me like this was an opportunity. And I know lots of you've met my daughter. And there was no one in the pizza place and I had already ordered it and so, she's eight. So I said, do you want to go in and get the pizza? And she was like, me? By myself? And I was like, yeah. And she, she went to the door and I saw her pause for a moment and then she went in and she had to figure out how to, I mean, this is the most silly thing, but this, this is something that I think this program-
Not silly.
To, but for her it was great. So like, do I like push the door, do I hold it and then risk dropping it and push the door open? Because mom had always walked alongside her with these things. And I stood outside of my car with the door open so I could watch her. And what, I was like ten feet from her. So she comes to the car with the pizza. She gets in the car and she goes, I feel so great about myself. And I was like, what a silly thing, but for me as a mom to be like, get the pizza. She, that confidence, I mean, she felt so good about herself. And I said, what were you doing at the door? When, when you paused, she goes, I just said, Adrian, you got this. You can do this. You got this, Adrian. So then she went in and got the pizza, but that, just coming to that watch party, had a huge impact on me. And then letting her do some things that I probably normally wouldn't have was really cool. And just seeing in that silly get the pizza moment, the impact it had on her and the confidence boost was awesome. So I love this. I would love for every kid to go like buy a pizza, but, you know, funding, but I, I, I love this because it really, really, I think, changed a lot for her, so she's super confident now.
Yeah, Domino's is a great community supporter. I don't know that we'll stock the lending library with Domino's, but thank you for sharing your story. That's really powerful.
So one, one thing with grants, a lot of times is, of course, we don't get any more money after the grant runs out. And then usually the division or, yeah, usually the division or organization would then have to take up that cost in the future. So is this something that will be in addition onto our budget in the future as you wanted to see it spread to other schools? Or?
So while I would never turn additional budgetary allocations away, I think that because the materials are already available to us in English and in Spanish, and part of what we want to use the money for is the, having additional copies in additional languages, those won't go bad or get used up. We'll be able to use those in an ongoing way. The lending library, if those end up being consumable supplies, they may need to be replaced, but I'm not, that's not a mandatory thing to have to run the program. And the capturing the stories, the Rockingham stories, that would be like a first-time kind of thing, and then we could use those year over year over year to be able to, like, once that exists, it wouldn't be something that would have to be done over and over again. I'm not sure if this would be something that different, speaking at the elementary school level, like if a PTO or some building level money could be used to restock things once they're there. I wouldn't see this as an ongoing thing that we would, you know, come back and look for this amount year on year on year for. But if you're giving it away, I would never turn it away for worthy cause.
Well, as we saw during the budget, there's not much given away a lot of times, so.
I understand. I understand.
I just wanted to clarify that, thanks.
Sure.
Board members, anything else? Thank you, Ms. Kaufman. Okay, next up, we have a policy revision. Dr. Shiflett, I think that one's yours.
Yes, Chair Hurst and board members, policy I I C.A. field trips. We have been working with Daniel Rose, our school board attorney, on making some adjustments on our policy regarding field trips. I'm bringing it to you as information tonight. And then in the coming weeks, we may revisit this. I, I know I've already had some conversations with some board members about some things they may like changed. I think the biggest change in this policy as it sort of stands before you tonight is when we talk about field trips, overnight field trips. In this policy, it would indicate that anytime we have an overnight field trip, there should be the same-sex chaperones for students attending. So if we had male and female students attending a overnight field trip, we should have a male and female chaperone. Doesn't designate they, that they have to be an employee, so it could be a parent of one of the students or, you know, volunteer, what have you. But this is, again, just for information to sort of begin the conversations. So please, you know, talk among yourselves, call me, let's have conversations about things you would like, you know, revisited or altered in this policy. And then when we feel like it's getting where it needs to be, we can maybe bring it back for action.
Thank you, Dr. Shiflett. Board members, do you have any questions?
I would just like to point out, there's a couple of things that I'm not crazy about with this, this policy. And as you all well know, I participate in a lot of overnight trips with students. And I don't really like the wording of discourage, we discourage overnight field trips. That was a perfect segue of the, I forget the name of the program now, all of a sudden I'm blanking, but the program that we just discussed about how you need to let go and let kids develop their own, their own person. And one great way to do that is overnight trips. And if you're not comfortable with your child going on an overnight trip, you absolutely should not let them, but it's definitely a good idea to encourage your children to go. I've seen so many kids, I've taught so many kids how to tip properly and how to act at a restaurant. Things that they don't necessarily get to do with their parents. Because some's just, some don't have the means and others, I mean, like, I never let my kid tip when we went to a restaurant together. But when we did these overnight trips, they had to do it for themselves.
So in the overnight trips, overnight trips are discouraged?
Yeah, ax that.
Maybe we just don't say discouraged, we just say, or maybe, maybe we just don't say encouraged or discouraged.
Ax it. Ax it, yes. And then also the, the one chaperone of each sex going on the, the field trip, that's going to be a burden in many ways, including, I mean, like, we just approved one where I am a chaperone and another female's a chaperone and we're going to the Chesapeake Bay, we will be sharing a room. If we couldn't share a room, we would have to eliminate more children from the trip because there's only so many rooms at Smith Island. There've been multiple times where it's been, you, we just can't get males. My husband, my husband is not going on these trips in my place. I am blessed to have the flexibility to be able to chaperon these trips. And unfortunately, men don't have as much flexibility in a lot of cases as some of us stay-at-home moms do. So I think that's going to be a real hard thing between the flexibility of finding male chaperones and then the availability to room together. Because I've gotten to be real good friends with some of the, the females in our CPS because we have to, we have to room together just to save costs and to save space. So I think that one's, that one's a real hardship as well. But I look forward to talking to you guys later more and I just wanted to get that on the record as some of my concerns. So thank you.
Anyone else?
Oh, wait, there was one other thing. I have notes here, I'm sorry. I have notes here, I'm sorry. I also feel like now's a great time to add training. We need to have a training component to this because even as doing it many, many times, well, a couple of years ago, somebody came to me and said, somebody on another, with another company or another division got in trouble for drinking, drinking at the field trip. And it never really occurred to me. I'm not a drinker. It didn't occur to me. We need to tell people, it's not okay. You have duty of care of these children all the time. Whether you've put them to bed and you're hoping they're stay in bed, you are still on the clock. And I don't think everybody realizes this. So just laying out some ground rules. I know that there've been times when parents have been asked, can you please take this group and go here? Well, it would be nice if we had background checks on those people to make sure that, that we were okay sending them with a group of kids. And then also to make sure that they understand the expectations. You're not going on an overnight field trip to have fun with your child. You're going to provide supervision for all the children. And I think we need some, some clarification and just some training for that. So I think that, and adding that component would be helpful as well. Okay, now I think I'm done. Thank you.
Those were some good notes. Thank you, Ms. Laura. Board members, next thing on our list for information item, our items, is something on here called the School Board Citizenship Award. So I just want to explain, I think, the, the thought or what that is. So as you know, we've removed our character counts presentations from board, from board meetings. And we are having, we're planning a character count celebration for the remaining students on April 21st. So that's Monday in a couple of weeks. And during this time, we will honor and celebrate probably about 30 students. Is that right, Ms. Gilkison? Probably about 30 students. So that honor, you know, we're still recognizing good character in our schools and honoring and celebrating those students. We're just doing it at a separate event so that it's not part of our board business meetings. But during that time, if there's any board member who would like to nominate a local, like an adult, and present them with a good citizen, good citizen award, we'll have an opportunity to do that. So this would, you know, my thinking is that we would honor and celebrate those 30 students. And then at the end, we would be able to maybe present to those students and their families a picture of what it looks like when that good character extends into adulthood and how there are many people in our communities who are serving and caring for their community still, even as adults. And so it would just, not a requirement. So if you don't have anyone specific in mind for this, it's not a requirement. But if you do have someone that you would like to honor in our community, if you could get with me on the specifics of what you would need to put together, probably a couple of sentences of what you, you know, why they're being honored. And then I think we would like to do a plaque or something like that. And so we would need to get that information to Ms. Gilkison in advance, so well enough in advance that those plaques can be made. So that's what the, that's kind of our thought. We'll, we'll try this out on our first one. There's a number of things we'll be kind of working the bugs out on this first character counts recognition celebration. But I look forward to that in a couple of weeks.
So I just want to verify, it can be anyone in Rockingham County? Doesn't have to be in our district, has to be in our district?
Whoever you feel like honoring.
Okay.
Okay, board members, last information item is the financial review for February of '25. That's in your packet of information. So if you have any questions, Mr. Moyers loves to answer those, those questions. Moving on to item number nine, superintendent comments. Dr. Shiflett?
Yes, thank you Chair Hurst. I have a few comments I would like to make this evening. First, just sort of some highlights. I did have an opportunity on Thursday, March 13th, to attend the FCCLA Star Event at Turnersby High School. This is an event where all four of our middle schools and high schools participate in practicing for their upcoming state competitions. And so it was, it was really neat to see them in action and they were getting feedback from the judges. I know Mrs. Carrie Gray was there helping judge and, and other teachers. Also, last week, I had an opportunity to attend the Teacher of the Year, or yes, last was last week, man, yes, today's Monday, right? That's right. It's been a long week, it's just Monday. Attended the Teacher of the Year ceremony. And we honored 25 RCPS teachers who were selected at, at their school to be the Teacher of the Year. And Susan Meadows from RA was recognized as the RCPS Teacher of the Year. So congratulations to her. I was able to enjoy Willy Wonka Jr. at EMS on Friday evening. I think Ms. Laura was there with us and Mr. Moyers. So I think that concludes the musical season. Okay, that's, that's true, that's right. We have some elementaries. Thank you, Ms. Laura. Forgot about that. I think there's an elementary school or two there, they're doing some musicals. I did have the opportunity to travel to VCU on Saturday, March 15th, to watch Spotswood capture the state title in boys 3A basketball. And that was also a very fun time. I was there in 1993 in the stands as well, so perhaps I'm good luck. And then in your packet, I did provide some information regarding faculty and student use, single-use bathrooms. Mr. Cross had asked me about that a few weeks ago, so that's for you to look through. There was basically only one school that Spotswood that maybe thought about making some changes. Everyone else seemed to be in a pretty good place right now. But I did want to make, you know, make you aware of that. Also, Mr. Cross had asked me at one of the, I think the last board meeting, to speak to Sheriff Hutchinson about the potential of having our towns provide SROs. And so I did speak with Mr. Sheriff Hutchinson the following day, it was Tuesday, March 11th, to inquire about using town SROs in our schools. He shares, he shared with me and wanted me to share with the board that he welcomes any school board member to call him or email him to discuss his thoughts about this idea. He also wanted me to remind school board members that we do have a memorandum of understanding between Rockingham County Public Schools and the sheriff's office. So that was his comments regarding that. So if you would like additional information, I encourage you to contact Sheriff Hutchinson on that. And then finally, I want to, maybe, I don't know how closely folks pay attention to our school board agendas and, and how things are orchestrated. But a few months ago now, maybe a couple of months ago, I approached our school board and said, I would like to put personnel as a voting in the action of our open session meeting instead of after the meeting. We kind of go and close and then open. Because I think sometimes it's prudent for us to make some announcements about things that are happening within our school division. And this is, you know, Solomon said, there's nothing new under the sun. So I didn't invent this. This was, this is how business was done when John Kidd was the superintendent at Rockingham County Public Schools. So I've, you know, this is how I kind of grew up as an administrator, watching that take place. So tonight, under personnel, I am sad to report that the school board approved the retirement of one Dr. Doug Aldifer. And Doug has been a tremendous, tremendous asset to Rockingham County Public Schools. And he is going to be missed greatly in his role. Doug and I, you know, back in the day, we both taught civics and economics at the middle school. We were middle school teachers. That's why we're a little bit quirky. And we both coached middle school basketball. So I mean, our relationship goes back for many, many years and, and we're definitely going to miss him. And we'll continue to celebrate him until he leaves us on June 30. But I tried to talk the school board into not approving it, but really and truly, he can leave whenever he wants to. He's, I think 32 years is what I understand. So now, this is coming to a shock and a surprise to many of you, but I've known this for a month and a half, right? And our executive leadership team has known it for two weeks. One thing you'll learn about me is I don't let grass grow under my feet. And I'm going to miss Doug, but I'm already going to start replacing him. Sorry, Doug. So we've been working in our, with Doug, along with him and our executive leadership team to, to make some changes. And currently, the way our executive team is structured, we have a couple of assistant superintendents, Doug being one of them, who really focused on academic support and providing leadership to our principals. And then the other, Mrs. Abernathy, who really focused on instruction. And we feel like we want to kind of, after even some comments from Ms. Hurst at the last meeting about thinking about things from a secondary world and an elementary world, we're going to be making some changes. So the other actions on this personnel report is Mrs. Donna Abernathy will be the Assistant Superintendent of Academic Support and Leadership. And her primary focus will be support for secondary principals, that's middle school and high school, and support for secondary instruction as well as administrative designee. And Dr. Amy Painter will be the Assistant Superintendent of Personnel and Compliance. And so we've kind of made some internal adjustments. So tomorrow, we will be advertising for an Executive Director of Elementary Education. And requirement for that particular role is to have successful experience as an elementary school principal. And we would even prefer if they taught elementary school because they will do all things elementary, elementary instruction, elementary academic support, elementary behavioral support, everything elementary. And so we'll be posting that job opening tomorrow and begin hopefully interviewing when we return from spring break and hopefully keep things moving forward. So just wanted to bring you up to speed with all of the, the happenings in RCPS.
Thank you, Dr. Shiflett. Board members, we'll now move into school board highlight questions and comments. Ms. Laura will begin with you this evening.
Great, thank you. And congratulations, Doug. We did really consider not accepting it, but yeah, I think there's some legal implications with that. So congratulations. I, I hope you thoroughly enjoy your retirement. And congratulations, Ms. Abernathy. We're looking forward to you stepping up and taking some more responsibility. I'd also like to thank Dr. Shiflett for mentioning Teacher of the Year. I'm super excited that a teacher from RA won that award. Because all of our teachers, all of our Teachers of the Year are amazing. That, that award is voted on by their peers. So it, it really, it's not, it's, and I think Sarah can better explain it, so maybe I'll leave that for you. But it, it really means a lot coming from the teachers themselves to nominate those Teachers of the Year. And then overall is formed by, is chosen by a committee. And our folks at RA work their, work so very hard and love their students in such a special way. It's, it's just great that RA got that award this year. And as Dr. Shiflett said, I was able to attend the musical at Elkton on, on Friday, I guess it was. The days are very much running together. We've been busy, busy, busy. And Willy Wonka and the Chocolate Factory was the final of the, the musicals on the secondary level for the year. And I was also able, the week before, thank you, I think Ms. Ford has left, I was going to especially thank the musical departments for working with me so very hard. I was able to catch the dress, dress rehearsal at Pence, The Wizard of Oz. It was great. The tornado was cute, it's all get out. And then I was able to catch the musical here, Matilda, phenomenal. I was able to catch the dress rehearsal of that one one Thursday evening. And then I was able to go to J. Frank for, what was the musical? I'm blanking. Anastasia, thank you, yes. And yeah, it was similar to, and Anastasia's a hard one to pull off at the middle school. So is Willy Wonka. They, they all did an excellent job. But the reason, and I, I love musical, I appreciate all the hard work and effort that all the kids put in. And definitely I heard what Ms. Ford said tonight about the way music and arts really help students. Because I cannot carry a tune in my bucket. My two-year-olds used to say, mommy, stop singing, when I tried to sing them lullabies. So I appreciate music that other people do. But the reason I had to shove everything in, I also would need to thank the Transportation Department for hooking me up with an amazing school bus that I was able to drive. I came here and picked up Montvideo Middle School and took them to the fairgrounds. And we did an FFA, FFA rally where I also judged the public speaking contest. And we've got some excellent public speakers in our midst, guys. They, they do, they're, they're doing a much better job than I am doing right now. Great, great students. That was such a pleasure. And then I took that bus and the next morning, picked up Broadway High School students, government students, to take them to Washington DC to the zoo on a field trip that their students had laid out and figured out. And they, they, they had a contest where they did different, presented different field trips, and this is the one that won. And it was an awesome trip, just a day trip to DC and back. In fact, we got, we hit Strasburg at about 3:00. And I was getting a little tired. It had already been a long day and I was, I knew the next, so the next day, I'll circle back to what I was saying, but the next day I took kids to Blacksburg from Elkton for contests for an overnight trip. And that, that was a great adventure as well. And those kids are really great kids. I, we have great kids all over our division. But I was getting a little drowsy driving back from DC, so I turned on the, the Rockingham County Public Schools radio, cranked it up. And it entertained the whole front of the bus the whole way. Because it was, this driver's being asked to go back and get these kids, this driver's being asked to go get those children, this driver, they called and said, do you have, do you have Bobby Smith? He's wearing a red sweatshirt. And they said, wait, yes, yes, I have Bobby Smith. Great. He forgets to, he doesn't like to get off the bus sometimes, so you need to make sure he's off the bus. And the bus driver's like, oh, that's great news, that's great information. Thank you for sharing that with me. Where does he get off? Because we had, I believe, Chris, they had four bus drivers out that afternoon. And Broadway was working so hard to make sure that our students, all of them, got home on time and they got off at the right spots. It's, it is a huge job that we ask these bus drivers to do. And I'm so happy that we do have a raise for them, or for our, for our field trip drivers in the, in the budget because they earn every penny. It is a hard job. And I do want to point out, I was doing it for free because I love Rockingham County Public Schools, but this is a difficult job to do. And I want to thank, I wanted to thank Chris Sowers, our Director of Transportation. And please tell all the bus drivers from Broadway that drove Friday a week ago, amazing job. They did a great job. So thank you.
Ms. Brooklyn?
I'll keep this brief, but I do want to say congratulations to Doug, Donna and Amy. I appreciate you all. My highlight was just that the Rockingham County Rortons pool together every year and give all of our third graders dictionaries. And this was the highlight of my daughter's week. And she's been reading the dictionary. And I am shocked and slightly annoyed. Just a read aloud in my backseat as I drive, it's so much fun. But it's been really cool to see her finding new things in there. And so I love that the Rortons do that for our entire community. So I'm sure they're not watching, but I, I do appreciate them.
Mr. Cross?
Thank you. I appreciate that. So Dr. Shiflett, Sheriff Hutchinson said to reach out to him personally and ask him that question?
Yes, that was his comment to me, Mr. Cross.
Okay. I'm, and I'll do that. I'll, I'll call Sheriff Hutchinson and I'll ask him personally. Because it is a great idea to have all the towns be able to have four SROs and be able to have Bridgewater covered, Elkton covered, Dayton has a middle school that once was covered by one of their town cops. And that relationship was good. I know that because I worked with, I think it was Dicky Conley at the time, that was in there. And we have Broadway as well. So and there's a lot of opportunity for us to put four SROs in our schools. And the students' protection is my number one priority as a school board member. All the counties surrounding Rockingham County have an SRO in their schools. Green County has SROs in their schools. Page County has SROs. Green County has SROs in their schools, Page County has SROs, Chandor County has SROs covering their schools, Augusta County has SROs covering their schools. I understand the logistics of being able to hire them right now, I get that. I remember when Augusta County Public Schools, their school board, I think it was three years ago, they told, they asked, they actually went to the board supervisor and said, we want an SRO in all of our schools. And I think they approved 11 at one time. And so we've tried to break it out over a few years, like four at a time, trying to get that in, because we knew it would be difficult in hiring that. And I know that Sheriff Hutchinson is a great leader, I worked under him, and I think he's a great guy. Donald Smith, it took him two years to fill those 11 positions. And so I know it takes time to do, I just thought that would be a great idea to reach out to the towns and to be able to ask them, could they provide that? Because that would be something off of his plate, and to be able to fill about four schools. So we're, we're in need of 13 schools to be covered still, and we, that would take off four of those 13. So I'll reach out, I'll, I'll have that conversation, and I'll ask him about that. Mr. Fitzgerald was here tonight, and he talked about MTC. And I just want to say that MTC is going to continue to be a diamond in Rockham County Public Schools with or without the partnership of Harrisonburg City Public Schools. As we have began to look at the contract, going over the contract with the regional program, which, the regional program, it gets about $200,000, I think, to help fund it, according to the state code, I think it was, is it 600? Okay. That won't be completely lost, I mean, one, some ideas that we have, if that happens, we could partner with other counties as well. And we could also do other options on helping our private schools here locally to be able to accept more kids here in the county into MTC. I think Mr. Fitzgerald said that, he talked about businesses being disappointed if we broke this contract. As a board member, it's our number one responsibility towards the taxpayers of Rockingham County Public Schools. And so I'm looking as a board member as that being my first, number one priority with this agreement. And right now, we have about an 80/20 split with this joint board, and we have 50% voting rights when it comes to it. There's a lot of different, one of the biggest issues is, is we have to tell students at MTC that's been there, say for, they're going for electricity. They go for two years to get their certificate in that. So the first year they'll go, and then we have to tell them, after they've completed their first year, we have to tell a number of our students in Rockham County Public Schools, that you have to wait out a year and then come back for your second year, because there's not seats that are there to fill because of students taking their place. So the program has grown, it will continue to grow, and it will continue to be a diamond in Rockham County Public Schools. But I believe this board is wanting to do what's best for our students, number one, and then number two, for our taxpayers. I wanted to say congratulations also to Dr. Aldifer. It's, you've done a great job here in Rockham County Public Schools, and a lot of people here are going to miss you. And you've made a lot of friends along the way, and so I'm sure that people are going to be reaching out to you and texting you and sending you emails, so enjoy that, and thank you for your career here at Rockham County Public Schools. I want to congratulate Amy Painter as well for getting this, the Assistant Superintendent position. I think it's well deserved, and I think you're going to do a great job. Finally, thank you, Dr. Shiflett, for bringing back the data from the bathrooms at all of our schools. And actually, that's not finally, but thank you for bringing that back. I will look over that and get back with you on that. I don't feel like it's so much as a school saying it's working, I think it's more of a board decision to say, we want to give those bathrooms back to our teachers that are in there. And so I want to look over the list, I want to see how many bathrooms were taken away from our teachers to make them private bathrooms for, for everyone, and because I know it's not working in some places. And last, I'd like to direct to Dr. Shiflett, too, one of the executive orders that President Trump has set out was making sure that there's no DEI initiatives or committees operating in public schools across America. So I'd like for you to, to look at all 23 of our schools and make sure there are no DEI programs that are operating in any of our public schools, and bring that information back to the board that you may find there. Thank you, that's all I got.
Okay, thank you all for coming out this evening, I do appreciate your time. Montvideo team, I told you, I had ballparked a certain in my head, but you know, we had good discussion this evening, and we still beat last year's time, I think, so that's a win. All around, we're going to beat the alarm tonight. Thank you. Thank you all. Oh, last year, I, I think some of our school board meetings just went long, and I believe with, we were doing Student Matters after board meetings instead of before board meetings, and I believe there were, we pulled some late nights in a couple of our schools, and 1:00 AM is being whispered up here. I don't know, I might have blocked that one out, but anyway, I, we've, we've streamlined a few things, and we've moved, it was a good year, but we've, we've moved a couple of things out of our, off of our agenda. And so anyway, proud to say, we beat the alarm tonight, you don't have to call the company and tell them we're still here. So thank you all for coming out this evening, this meeting is adjourned.